One minute to last, one minute. Thirty seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
This community college that we're staying at.
It's come to order. Good evening and welcome to the April Morgan and Planning Zoning Workshop. And I'd like to issue a Happy New Year to the members of the community. Being that this is our first meeting since of June of two thousand fifteen. Okay, under Old Business, we have a review and approval of those June eleventh, two thousand fifteen minutes in which we addressed two topics. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to read those minutes. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, I move those be approved. Next item is a review of the city council's action since that last meeting. Lee, can you mark this?
Okay, there's been a few items of planning commission business that were taken up since their last meeting. First being, they approved a zoning ordinance amendment to allow bed and breakfast within the medium intensity district areas that had neighborhood conservation overlays. You may recall, it's been quite a while since we met, but we discussed that and they went through public hearing process. There was no opposition to that amendment and so that did, they did approve that. They also approved the zoning ordinance amendment to allow correctional facilities within high intensity districts. You may recall that was initiated by Burke County. And as far as I know, they have not taken any final actions as to the jail location. I know a few of you have asked me that question, but I do not have any updates. I do understand that they may be taking that item up again in one of their upcoming meetings in May, I believe. I saw it on, last time I saw their agenda. Few other items that are not necessarily related to planning commission action, but have been taken by the city council. They approved just this past month, some new sidewalks to be built along Berkmont Avenue to, or along West Fleming Drive from Berkmont Avenue to Morganton Heights in an effort to try to expand our pedestrian connectivity from our neighborhoods to our commercial centers. That's in the Mission twenty thirty plan, so it certainly follows with some of our guidance. Other notes, exit one oh five is finally complete, except for landscaping. And we have approved the plans that DOT has initiated for the landscaping along both sides of that interchange. And hopefully they'll be letting that out for contract very soon. And you'll start seeing some trees and beautification areas along both sections, including some of the center medians that were built. So we're very pleased with that. We're very satisfied with that work. Exit one oh four is scheduled for completion this fall. That's been a long project also, but they are really making some headway now. They're kind of working on the last pieces of that on the town side of that project. And they indicate to us that that will be complete by this fall. DOT is also beginning discussions about replacement of exit one oh three and also doing interchange works at exit one hundred. There's also discussion about replacement of a railroad bridge in front of Morganton Heights along West Fleming Drive. So there's some major transportation projects that are in the process of being studied and programmed into the state's Transportation Improvement Program. Believe that's it right now. I may have some other items that we can talk about at the end of the meeting, but I believe that's all the council.
Any questions, Lee? Okay, moving to our next item, we're now well into over a year of application of the updated zoning ordinance. And would you like to address that, Lee, as far as the?
Just briefly, and so, this was kind of a lead in to some of our new business tonight. Since we've been operating under the new zoning ordinance since January one of two thousand fifteen. From a staff standpoint, it's gone very smoothly. We seem to be having a lot of success in working through some of the requests that have come about. Some development request in both residential and commercial pieces. It's built in a lot of flexibility. There's been some reduced setbacks and density options available to developers. They're starting to understand kind of the criteria and some of the flexibility in the ordinance. So we're pleased that all the hard work that you folks put in in two thousand fourteen is paying off. Obviously, we haven't had a lot of rezoning requests. That's a good thing. That shows that we, you know, hopefully got the map pretty close to being correct. There will be some, I feel like, as we go forward, we're starting to have a few conversations with folks on some of the fringe areas that we were discussing, you know, which way to take it. So you probably will be seeing some of those come forward. We're actually going to be proposing one that'll be on your May agenda for an area to change from a classification. So that'll be brought to you by the staff and we'll also be bringing some additional sign ordinance amendments to you next month. Some of those have been initiated through the US Supreme Court decisions for temporary signage. And we'll be also looking at some freestanding signage alterations as well that we've run into that we'll probably need to discuss and look at some of those. So, but otherwise, we're pleased. We've been real pleased with your work. Everybody's worked. Put a lot into it, so paying off.
Thank you, Lee. The next item is appearances. Tonight, we're going to be addressing four amendments to the existing zoning ordinance. But at this particular time, if there's someone in the audience would like to address a particular development zoning issue that's on their mind, it's an opportunity. But seeing none, we're going to move right on to our new business. First item under that is consideration to amend Appendix A point four of the zoning ordinance to redefine motor vehicle and boat services, which also will include bodywork. Lee, you want to update us on that?
Okay, most of the amendments tonight are things that we've run into in implementation of the ordinance. Either a use has come in and asked for a particular approval in a certain location. And so, some of them were oversights in the ordinance preparation process when we drafted the ordinance. And some of them, we, they're just not working right currently. So, but most of these tonight are kind of more clarification type ordinance amendments. The first being motor vehicle and boat services to include bodywork. There was a request to put in a new body shop in a particular location. And when we drafted the ordinance, bodywork was left out of the ordinance. We really don't have a location that's allowed anywhere. And so that obviously is not something we wanted to do. I think our concern was there were locations that we definitely didn't want body shops to be in and with outdoor storage and some other things, it was defined out of the ordinance. And so, we're going to have to accommodate the use somewhere. And so, looking at the ordinance from the staff standpoint, and I actually spoke to our consultant who helped us draft the ordinance and ask their opinion. And so, all of these amendments tonight, we've kind of run by them as well to make sure that we're staying in the same direction. And they agree that bodywork does fit under motor vehicle and boat services. So what we're proposing to do is to redefine motor vehicles and boat services to allow bodywork. Currently where it says excludes bodywork. So that would be allowed in HID and exclusive industrial districts to the same places that you could do an automotive repair or fuel maintenance or repair services, car washes, all those types of uses. So that's a fairly simple change in the ordinance under the definition section. And the outdoor display or outdoor storage is under a different category. And so, those conditions, if you had a body shop, but you were actually storing wrecked cars, that falls under a different category. And so, there's a different set of criteria for outdoor storage. So that would protect these uses from being in areas that would not be as amenable to that type of use. And there's additional screening criteria. They also cannot do outdoor storage of wrecked vehicles anywhere within any of the corridor overlay areas. So along our major roadways, there would be restrictions against having auto wrecked vehicles within view of the roadway. So we would recommend that this ordinance be approved as submitted to you.
Lee, can I just ask for one clarification? If there is a car dealership that also does bodywork, does the restriction about the fifty feet from the right of way apply to new cars that they are trying to sell? Or is that just for wrecked cars that are there for bodywork?
That's just for wrecked cars. There, there's a different set of criteria, which is, I don't have that up on the screen.
For the car lot business?
For the car lot. That would go under retail. And there is an automotive retail category.
I just didn't want to inadvertently screw up the car lots.
Now, if they had bodywork, they would have to abide by the bodywork section of the ordinance. But the automobile sales would have to abide by their section. So each use is a principal use that would have to meet each guideline.
Any other questions or comments? Lee, I'd like to again point out under that definition, the suggested amendment. We talk about motor vehicle and boat services, however, within the body of the definition, there's no mention of boat. And is there a way to incorporate that?
I'm sure there is.
Did you say motor vehicle and boat repair?
An establishment engaged in providing mechanical, automotive, fuel, maintenance and repair services. This use includes service stations, bodywork. We would just say automotive and boat service, fuel, maintenance, repair. We can add boat in that definition since it's actually in the piece being defined.
If I may suggest, I think the usual word is marine.
Marine?
In the first sentence there, establishment engaged in providing mechanical, automotive, marine, fuel, maintenance and repair. And then, as was suggested in the second sentence, motor vehicle or boat repair.
I think that's a great idea.
I would, I think that's a great, great suggestion. Any comment about that? Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, need a second. Anyone like the second? Okay, the motion would be to amend the Appendix A dash four as recommended by the staff to include the verbiage automotives, comma, marine, fuel, maintenance and repair service. And this, this use includes service stations, bodywork, or painting, gas stations, motor vehicle, or boat repair and car washes. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries?
Okay, that item will go as a recommendation to the May second city council meeting.
Okay, under, I think on the agenda, already lost it. Here we are. Under second item, a new business is a consideration to amend now Section four point two point four and Section four point two point five of the zoning ordinance to clarify and reference an exception to the thirty-five foot height, the maximum requirement for non-residential buildings within the high intensity district, HID. Okay, Lee, we want to discuss that.
Okay, this came up, what we found was another oversight. It's more of a reference amendment. The ordinance allows buildings within the HID already over thirty-five feet. And it's, but it's not referenced very well from the conditions in the table of permitted uses. You may recall that there are design standards incorporated into the ordinance. And height exceptions are one of the requirements where there's some special architectural standards for a building that is greater than thirty-five feet tall. It's just not easy to find in the ordinance. So this is more of a user-friendly type amendment. We are recommending that we place a height limitation of seventy-five feet as a maximum for any building within the HID district, which is currently not in the ordinance right now. So in redefining or establishing a new reference in the ordinance, we're basically saying, if you're under thirty-five feet, you're fine. You can build to whatever typical standards are in that zoning ordinance, in that zoning district. If you want to build to a height greater than thirty-five feet, whereas we're actively trying to recruit new hotel to the area right now. And so, obviously hotels are greater than thirty-five feet in most instances. We found that, they're the ones that actually asked the question and said, well, can we build a building higher than thirty-five feet? Yeah, certainly you can. They were having difficulty finding it in the ordinance of that reference. So what we want to do is add in our non-residential dimensional standards table in the ordinance, a reference here in this, that would be this little star, asterisk, to reference a section, the exception table. And within the exception table, we would add the verbiage, "Non-residential buildings within HID districts may be constructed to a maximum height of seventy-five feet if vertical articulation is utilized as per the design section," which is already in place. And that section of the ordinance already said that you could build higher than thirty-five feet, but it wasn't in the actual table. When they saw this thirty-five feet in the, in the table of a maximum height, they assumed that that was the maximum height anywhere in town, which really didn't make any sense because we allowed sixty-five foot buildings in the CBD and sixty-five foot buildings in the EID. And so, that was, it was not intended, or it wasn't our intent to recommend that buildings stay only thirty-five feet within the high intensity district. So, if I can show you, scroll down. The, that's the way it reads right now. So that's the way the table currently looks. So it doesn't have the asterisks and it doesn't have the reference to the conditions section. But there's already a section in the ordinance that says exceptions to dimensional standards. We want to add a new reference F that says, go to the section for vertical articulation requirements and you can build a higher building. And so, then you go to that particular area. And vertical articulation is already set up. And I'll give you an example. So there's, this is already in the ordinance where what we try to do is where you don't have a seventy-five foot tall building. That's, this has sheer flat walls. We require that you offset sections of the building, change the roof style, add different color textures to the lower sections to help break up the architectural design and make it not so monolithic in its design, which is pretty typical in most of the taller buildings today anyway. Places like that exceed that thirty-five foot standard are Grace Ridge, the Grace Hospital. There's very few buildings that exceed that anyway, but there are a few in town. And so, as, as those buildings are constructed in the future, these standards would apply.
Any questions, Lee?
Just one question generally, the seventy-five foot, I'm more concerned with that, quite frankly. Is, is it a little not, that caps us? Certainly it might be desirable, but for instance, a hotel at an interstate versus, I think, you know, lower in the high density downtown areas is fine. But the seventy-five feet adequately do us for five to seven stories or a hundred, you know, a fifty to a hundred room, you know, building or something like that, and still have fire service.
That would typically accommodate a hundred-bed hotel, five-story. And you can see, five stories normally ten feet each. And then, the roof itself is what takes up the additional height. Whether it's a retirement living facility or a hotel, some of the roof structure is going to add that, add that additional height.
Coming from one of the newer hotels, I don't know if it was a Hilton chain or whatever it is there and down where friends in Catalina County, near the convention center there, it seems like that would probably be stretching that seventy-five foot. I don't know what their ordinance calls for, but.
I'm not familiar with pictures.
Not that we have to be, you know, them, but.
Yeah, that, I mean, we could.
Is it limited because of fire safety, the seventy-five feet? Is that for safety requirements?
That's preferred, to keep a building below that because our ladder trucks, I think our ladder truck will go up to a hundred and five feet, but that's, that's not necessarily, you don't want to encourage buildings to be at that height.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
Any comment, Claude, on that?
The hundred and five foot's going to reach very easily eight floors. If you're close enough to it.
But you want to be able to spray down on the building also, not straight horizontal off the top of the ladder.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, request a motion. I'd like to make the motion. We accept the amendment as proposed by the staff. Do I have a second? You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries? Item number three under our new business is a consideration to amend Table three point one of the zoning ordinance to include single-family dwellings as a permitted use within the high intensity district, which again is HID. Lee?
Now, this was, I think, a complete oversight or topo, a typographical error in the table. You can see in single-family dwellings that they're permitted in low intensity, medium intensity, central business and SID at the end. There was, they were not permitted in the HID for some reason. And of course, there's a lot of houses in the high intensity district. The, this is a simple ordinance amendment that would basically place a P as a permitted use within that zoning classification. That, that would prevent a lot of non-conformities in the entire jurisdiction. High intensity, if you recall, is a district that allows multifamily uses, commercial businesses, office and institutional. It's not necessarily a place where a lot of new single-family is located, but there is a lot of existing single-family. Carbon City Road area, there's some along the older corridors. You don't find a lot on West Fleming Drive and US sixty-four, but there are a few houses actually out US sixty-four, past the old Walmart, that are still being used as single-family dwellings.
Any other question, comment? Okay, I need a motion to amend the ordinance of Table three point one of the zoning ordinance to include single-family dwellings as a permitted use within the high intensity districts. I have a motion. Motion and a second? Have a second? All in favor? Motion carries? And our final new item tonight is a consideration to amend Section five point four point two of the zoning ordinance to allow wall signage to be placed upon existing mansard roofs. Tell us about that.
Okay, the ordinance, as it was written, does not allow wall signage above the eve of any roofed structure. In other words, you can't put signage on the roof. Has to be on the wall. We allowed additional wall signage on all sides of the building when we drafted the ordinance, but we, we brought language forward that said you can't put it up on your roof. Well, that's to prevent those signs from, from being built new. But what we didn't do is accommodate for existing businesses who have these mansard roofs. Very few of the roofs in Morganton that are mansard roofs are true mansard roofs. They're more of a parapet that kind of hides mechanical equipment and things on a flat roofed building. There are a few structures around town that are actual mansard roofs, but most of them are like this at the old Nara Chinese Place or the Burger King. These are not true mansard roofs. But when you place wall signage on a building like this that has quite a bit of window space, there's really no place else to place the signage, other than on the mansard roof itself. But our ordinance does not allow it. And in fact, our new ordinance discourages mansard roofs from being built at all. That's specifically exempted from the ordinance as being a permitted design standard under the new rules. So that, that means that most of the new, any of the new buildings that would come in would not have the same issue. But these existing buildings, obviously they are there, they're going to continue to be there, do not see any change or tear downs in any of their futures. So in order to prevent them from having a lot of non-conforming issues going forward and having to go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for special exceptions and things of that nature, it's probably just as easy for us to create an exemption for existing businesses to be able to place their wall signage on the mansard. And you can see, I mean, they're, most of them are fairly attractive. They still have to comply with the same signage design standards that we have and the same square footage. So Village Inn is actually a true mansard roof. You can see, it's almost like a small hip roof. That's probably one of the few in town that, that their sign really stands, it looks like it's actually sitting on the roof. And so, the ordinance would not allow that at all today. If that, if they were to try to replace that sign under the current guidelines, they could not do so. They would have to go down on the facade wall and place their signage. So our amendment is to change that section. And these are, there's some of the examples, there's actually more of these around town than the ones I've shown you on the screen. But this is, I believe, this is Carbon City Road. And that's a flat roofed building with a mansard roof that goes across the portico.
So can you clarify, if we were to approve this, can you clarify how much of that facade space the sign could actually take up? And whether or not it could be taller than the roof?
It, it does say that it does, it can extend above the peak of the ridge. So it's got to stay below the ridge of the roof. It can't, it can't project above the building. And the amount of square footage is already regulated by the width of the building and the square footage of the facade. So that's already in the signed ordinance. It still falls under a wall sign in this amendment. So it has to meet all. So, it has to meet all the same criteria as the other ones that just gets to put it on the man-served. That's not to say that they can't put it on the wall, but as you saw, some of those, it's almost like an overhang. They built it as an overhang to, to protect people walking around the building. And if you put it on the facade of the building, it tends to put their, put their signage out of public view. And so, I understand why they don't want it on the facade, they'd rather have it on the man-served.
That's down their glasses place, place.
Well, they can, yeah, they, yeah, well, it's just harder to view from people driving by. And, and so, it's understood, at least I, I, I recognize that that's a, that's an issue that probably we need to, need to address. So, our, our, it says that the, this paragraph F that we're adding may contain signage upon the man-served roof that does not extend above the ridge of the roof. And, and that would be the, prevent you from having big tall signs on top of the, above the peak.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, one, one question. If, if the sign size is controlled by the facade of the building you're looking at and you're gonna put it on the, on the man-served roof, does that now get included in the square footage for the calculation?
It does.
It's based on what, one facade of the man-served?
Now, contrary to that, you can build a parapet. The, the ordinance doesn't prevent you from building a parapet wall that's vertical and, and is in alignment with the facade of the building. And, and people can add square footage to their building signage that way. And it also hides mechanical equipment and other things. For some reason, man-served roofs were kind of made taboo in this ordinance. And, and, and so, yeah, I mean, you could change it completely and allow.
We're just arguing the angle of that, that.
Yeah, you basically are gonna, because it's gonna have to be kinda propped up on a, on a stand, on a man-served roof, whereas opposed to a, a, a parapet where it's flush against the wall, it's.
But see, really, none of them are really man-served roofs, I mean, in my opinion. I mean, they're, they're.
Parapets.
Yeah.
You, you would describe them as a parapet.
Yeah. So, I mean.
When I think of a man-served roof, I think of like the Tate House or something, you know?
Right.
The historical.
A true man-served, yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're very faux man-served is what they are.
They, they were designed to allow the use of more square footage where a typical roof design prohibited that. So, the man-served roof became very popular and it's incorporated in lots of older cities so that you get that extra square footage without having to sacrifice a decent roof. And a, and a true man-served is four sides or sloped. There's also called a gambrel roof, which is basically a man-served that they cut the, the ends off. And I don't know if you would wanna consider throwing that name in there also.
Uh, that's actually addressed in the, in the ordinance. You, that's a permitted roof style.
But in this, for roof signs, could we include that also as far as man-served slash green?
Do we have any commercial gambrel roofs in Morganton?
I don't know that we have any. Yeah, there's, most of those are on residential properties. I don't, I, I can't think of a, right off the top of my head. There may be, there may be some out there, but I, I don't recall that we have.
See, mainly storage buildings in Barnes.
There's one at Nebo exit, gas station, but that's the only one around.
I mean, it's basically a form of a man-served roof, if you're comfortable with that language.
Yeah, maybe a form, yeah.
We could, we could add that just to cover us in case we do have any of those. But you've kinda seen what we're trying to address.
Yep, yep. And I'd also suggest where you say, uh, extend above the ridge, put slash peak, since you've used that verbiage.
Okay.
That might help create some clarity. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion with the, the two suggestions of incorporating the gambrel, man-served slash gambrel roofs and ridge slash peak of the roof? Would have a motion to adopt this amendment? Got a motion, someone second?
I'll second it.
And a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, a call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, that motion carries.
All of those items will go to the May second city council meeting for public hearing.
Okay, is there any other business that members of the commission would like to bring up or discuss?
Just for note, at our next meeting, which will be held on May the twelfth at five fifteen, we will have a couple additional ordinance amendments, potentially one or two rezonings. And we will elect officers. Since we have not met since last June, we, we didn't have our annual election for chairman and vice chairman. And so, that will be an item on the agenda. So, I, I know you guys will be arm wrestling over who's gonna take that spot. And.
We're not fixing something that's not broken.
There's also the upcoming appointments. Hank, Judy and Pete will be up for, their term will, will expire in June. And so, get your name in the ring with the city council if you'd like to continue those spots. And Kim Woolard has resigned from the board because she has moved out of town. So, we do have a vacant city seat that needs to be filled. And we are still missing one E T J appointment. So, the county commissioners actually make that appointment. But if you know folks that live within the extraterritorial jurisdiction or you're listening at home and you, you're interested or you know folks that would be interested in that area to serve, please contact us or the Burke County Commissioners for, for those appointments.
And we'd also like to thank Kim for her volunteer of her time and effort and talents to the commission. And I regret to see that she's relocated, but wish her all the best and I hope she understands how much she'll be missed.
I agree.
Anything else? Hearing none, we will adjourn.
We're unanimous?